Alison Cormack, thank you for coming, welcome.
I'm happy to be here.
I think the best place to begin, since you are one of two non-incumbents running for this race, is to ask for your impressions of how this council has functioned and what you think you will uniquely bring to the new council that will enable it to function better.
That's a timely question. I've been watching the council quite carefully for the past year and a half as I've been thinking about running and potentially serving. And over that time, I've seen more personal attacks, assumptions about intent, and some block voting, which I think has been unhealthy and unhelpful to the community. So I think a few weeks ago was a particularly egregious example. One of the reasons I talk about being professional is that I think we're long past the time when we should be talking about civility. I think really it should just be a more professional environment. I'm actually already demonstrating that, even in the forums meeting with other people. I am using full titles referring to the Vice Mayor Eric Philseth, not by his first name, but by his title. So I think we have an opportunity to reset. People are doing the public's business, and I'd like to see it conducted slightly more professionally. And I do think unfortunately, some of the divisions have prevented them from making progress on things that seem like they might be straightforward, even referring something to another committee. So I think if we have the same people, we are likely to get the same outcome. I am only one person, and as I said recently at an event with some other people in the neighborhood, I don't know if I alone can make a difference, but by God, I am willing to try.
What do you think is the source for what you just described as happening?
Some of it is having had people run on slates. So when you have people run as a team, they sort of start with a team philosophy, rather than coming at it from, "We're really here to look at what everyone is in everyone's best interests." You've certainly seen a number of votes that are a little perplexing where someone would vote with their team rather than with what you think they might otherwise choose. So that's actually part of the reason that I'm not running on a slate. I'm not running with any other candidates, and I'm not running against any of the candidates. That's a tough sled for someone who is not an incumbent, but that was a conscious choice I made because I don't think this has been helpful for our community, to have people run on slates.
I don't think the slates per se, to use your term, explain the lack of respect that occurs on occasion between council members, because not everybody on one side or the other behaves the same way.
Correct.
So I guess what I'm trying to probe at here is what causes a council member, regardless of what side they're on, so to speak, to, in your opinion, treat their colleagues the way some of them are treating their colleagues?
I can't possibly speculate on their intentions. That's actually one of the things that happens often at the council meetings that I find perplexing. I really don't know what to attribute it to. I will say, you know, I am asked routinely, "Which of the three incumbents do you want to pick off? Which of the ones do you want to serve with?" And I always say, "I can work with any of them." And I believe I can.
And to your comment about choosing not to run as a group, I'm not sure that there's a group that you could run with in this election, since no one really is running that way, I think, to the benefit really of the campaign, but you-
I'm not sure I agree with that, Bill.
Okay, well, let me ask my question, and then you can respond to that. But you made what I assume is a very deliberate decision to align yourself with Mayor Niss. She hosted your announcement-
No.
At her house?
No.
No?
No, that was Cory's.
Okay, I thought she also was involved in yours.
No, she's going to have an event for me, but my kickoff was held in Ramus Park in June.
Okay, well, thank you for correcting that.
Yeah, no problem.
But I guess the question has to do with your ties to existing members of the council. Because if the question for members of the community trying to decide who to vote for for these seats is, "How will that person relate to the others on the council with regards to substantive issues?", what can you say that would put them more at ease with however you're going to come in, the preconceived alignments or allegiances that you may have coming in?
Well, let me address the connection with Mayor Lizness first. She and Joe Semidion were the co-chairs of the library bond. So I have worked with them for 11 years now, and I appreciate their support of the bond then, and their joint support of me now. With respect to the various members of council, I have met with all of them, and there are things that I share in common with each of them. So I'll use Vice Mayor Eric Philseth as one of the first examples. He and I share a belief, and I've sat through these finance committee meetings, that we do need to pay attention to our pensions, we need to figure out how to account for that appropriately. I'm grateful he's brought that up, and I absolutely agree with him on that. Councilmember Tom DeBois is taking up the mantle along with me of saying, "We really need to redo Coverly." That's something that he and I could work on. Councilmember Greg Tanaka, he and I share a belief that adding things to the infrastructure budget when it's already over budget without a source of funding is a legitimate concern, and we can't do that willy-nilly. Councilmember Koo is taking the lead on airport noise, and I appreciate her spending time on that. It's an area she has more expertise in than I do. Councilmember Wolbach and I, we certainly share a belief that affordable housing isn't something that should just be talked about, it should be something we create the environment for. Councilmember Holman and I have discussed the process concerns about council in terms of whether or not the mayor makes the first motion. We've discussed that. We share a belief that the link between the city and the schools is important. She and I share concerns about trees, all of that. I'm not doing math, Councilmember Scharf. Councilmember Scharf and I, you know, we have agreements certainly in some of the areas about what would be appropriate for rules about housing, and potentially, how can the business community help us fund train crossings? Councilmember Niss and I certainly share a belief in healthy city being a priority. And now I have to go one by one. You girls can help me if I've lost anybody! But you know, I really truly believe that- beg your pardon?
Adrian Fine.
Oh, yes, sorry, thank you, thank you. You know, Councilmember Fine, I appreciate his alacrity in speaking and his clear thinking, and I find he often has the ability to step back from something that's being discussed and elevate it. I honestly believe that I can work with any of the nine there. Obviously, there'll be seven. If I'm one of them, that'll be six of them. And candidate Boone, I should mention that. I'm just getting to know him, but in the event that he's elected, I'm confident that we'll find things we can work on together.
So one of the questions on the PAN questionnaire was what do you hope to achieve for the next four years? New sites, infrastructure, housing-
Big projects.
Yeah, big project. And fiscal responsibility. And I did want to zoom in on infrastructure.
Sure.
So are you in favor of the hotel tax?
Well, you guys co-opted my language. I was using it even before it was in your editorial. I am reluctantly supportive. And the reason I'm reluctantly supportive is that the cost of the infrastructure, things in the infrastructure plan currently does exceed the funds that we already have allocated, or I guess I should say identified. So I'm a reluctant supporter. It does not make me happy to be headed up towards the top, you know, in the state and potentially in the nation. I'm not happy about that, we'll have to keep an eye on it, but I am a reluctant supporter. I'd just step back and say, my first job was on the United States Senate Budget Committee, and I was an econ major, and I do believe in matching sources and uses of funds where we can. And this isn't really a great match, so that gives me a little bit of pause.
Given the shortage between the costs of projects and the projected revenue that's going to come in for paying for them, would you opt to take things off of the infrastructure list, or find other sources of revenue?
My first preference, my preference would be the former. And so some discussions we're already starting to have, even amongst the candidates and in the public, whether it's the downtown parking garage, whether it's everything that's identified for the bicycle pedestrian implementation program, and certainly the order of things. So one of the things that's been interesting walking and knocking and talking with people, there is an undercurrent of concern about budget and finance. And one of the discussions I've had with people, I happen to live on Ross Road, is I think we should prioritize need-to-have before nice-to-have. And unfortunately, the police station is a need-to-have, you know? It's been 12 years since that was the second crisis. And I was not excited about spending $91 million. I'm less excited about spending $106 million, but we need to get that done. So I feel like that should come first, and then we got to take a look at some of the other things. I'll just put in a plug here for participatory democracy. There's a platform that enables communities to make collective decisions on an advisory basis, and I think this is something we might contemplate in this area, because we get a lot of people saying, "This particular project is most important to me, this particular project is most important to me." And when we only have seven people on council, we'll have, in some respects, even fewer voices. So my hope is that we could step back and say, "A lot has changed since we did the plan in 2014. Maybe we should get a little more input."
Well, one of the things you said a few minutes ago is that you agree with Greg Tanaka about not adding things to the infrastructure plan, so you can identify funding. Having said that, how would you have voted for the J M Z, the animal shelter, a month ago? And how would you find money to fund Coverly, which I know is a project you're passionate about?
Oh yeah, absolutely. Great question. The animal shelter was 9-0. That doesn't happen very often. And fundamentally, if we're going to do something, I think we should do it well. And everyone agrees how poorly the animal shelter has been run, and that Pets in Need offers us the opportunity to do much better. My biggest concern was not on the specific vote that night. I would have voted for it, and I'm just, sorry, let me make that clear, for the animal shelter. My biggest concern is that the subsequent construction, that they think might be $20 million, and their fundraising looked like five or six, hopefully it would increase, but that would be a very big commitment from the city. So my concern is more in the long term than the medium term. The Junior Museum and Zoo, you know, it's wonderful that the Perry's family has been generous to so many places in the community, and I'm certainly grateful for that. And they did, you know, the whole team did a bang-up job on fundraising. We thought we'd done really well with the library foundation, and they totally blew us out of the water, which is fantastic. Construction is going quickly. That's a smaller amount, that was, I think, an extra $1 million, so on top of what we had already promised. So I think that's manageable within the, you know, how much will the new hotels bring in area. But then to Coverly, sorry, yes, I would have voted for the Junior Museum and Zoo as well, but that would have precipitated a, "We need to reprioritize." Right? We can't keep adding to something that already has a negative amount. With respect to Coverly, you know, that's a joint project between the school district and the city. It makes all the sense in the world that that would be another capital bond in the same way that the libraries were. We're just going to have to wait and see what the design looks like and who's responsible before we get into the details of whether it's a school bond or a city bond.
So you don't see that as an infrastructure plan addition, it would be more of like a long-term?
I don't think so. I don't think so. But I will, I'll just, you know, happy to say that one thing that I just want to be sure is that that's done in conjunction with the entire community, because there are some of us who believe that Measure D earlier this century failed because it was a little skewed towards one part of the city and rather than the other. So in the event we do Coverly, I think it's important that we consider, is there also something we should be doing at the Baylands Athletic Center or somewhere else to make sure that it's a balanced? I'm just thinking ahead, right? Because I want to get it built, so we have to get it funded, so it has to pass. So that's what I'm thinking in that area. But I'm super excited about the consultant that's been brought on board and the real progress. And I take a little bit of credit for coming to the city-school liaison meeting and saying, "Hi, where's the plan?", and continuing to show up, so.
I know you just said that you would prefer to prioritize infrastructure projects. I'm wondering what your thoughts are on some sort of business tax, aligning that with infrastructure needs?
I haven't thought about that with respect to the infrastructure so much for what's already in the plan. It's certainly been part of a broader discussion that people in the community are having about how we're going to fund the train crossings. And another thing to add in there would be really addressing our transportation problems within the city, which fundamentally, I'm coming to the conclusion is going to need to be a really robust shuttle system. So that's an area where I'm open to a tax on business for funding a major transportation project. All TBD though, right? So let me just be super clear on like, what would the categories of that look like? You know, would it be designed by headcount? Would it be by revenue? Would it be by square footage? You know, okay, all of this also presumes we have great data on businesses, which we know we don't have yet, so we'll get that. You know, would there be an exemption for small businesses? How many employees? What would that look like? I am not committing to which version of that might be appropriate. I think this actually brings up something that Karen Holman and I have discussed, which is very helpful when staff comes forward and says, "Here are a couple options that we looked at, and we chose this one, and here's why." That kind of information really helps people trust the process and understand the thinking. So I just wanted to lay that out there about, we are very early in the idea of taxing businesses, and I would need a lot of information, sort of as I laid out in those categories.
I think we should probably dig into the issue of development and housing.
Okay, sure.
And I wonder if you could describe where you believe the line should be drawn with regards to commercial development and restrictions on commercial development, and then we can get to some of the other issues that have been recently debated by the council.
So the comprehensive plan process was not pretty, especially at the end. But the process did complete, and we did have an agreement, and there was a specific amount of commercial space that would be built between now and 2030. And I am and was supportive of that amount. So when the council responded to the ballot initiative to reduce that, my half to cut it to 800,000, I would not have voted to accept that. I would have voted to send it to the voters for two reasons. The first reason is that, from a process standpoint, I think it tells all the people that worked on the comprehensive plan that, you know, your work and the compromises you put together, we're going to go ahead and overrule that. And then from a political standpoint, I think, you know, we, and certainly people in the media, make a lot of assumptions about people's beliefs about office development based on who was elected to council. And if you look at the past two elections, it's a little hard for me to extrapolate from that. I actually would have liked to see what the community thought, everyone. I would have liked to see the outcome of that vote. That said, I'm perfectly comfortable with the 800,000-square-foot cap, and I'm actually glad that it's been reduced, because I hope that that can, you know, reduce the amount of conversation we have on that and start to talk more about that impact on transportation and housing. So it might not have been my personal preference, I'm very comfortable with where we are on the development, office development.
And what about the removal of the downtown cap?
You know, I'm not convinced I understand enough about what was going on, you know, in people's minds at that point. It was not apparent to me what the motivation or impetus was, so I didn't see any reason to remove it. You know, those caps have served us well.
And what about the annual 50,000-square-foot cap? There was some disagreement when it was adopted about whether the policy is wise at all, and more recently, there was some disagreement on the council as to whether a new square footage should be rolled over from one year to another. I'm curious about your thoughts, both about the general annual cap and the rollover provision that was just instituted.
Well, I think of the general annual cap as like a Mitchell Park, right? Mitchell Park's about 56,000 square feet, so it's a nice sort of visual. You know, we have millions and millions of square feet of office space, and we do have a vibrant economy. I'm comfortable with having the cap that we have. I also would have been comfortable letting people, if there was, you know, a project that didn't make it in one year, be in the next year. A calendar year, you know, these projects are complicated, so I would have been fine with the rollover, but I am comfortable with the cap at that level.
Do you think the city should bring back the planned community zoning that's been so controversial because of misused public benefits?
I don't know that we should bring it back, but it is important that we have some method that gives us a little bit of flexibility, whether it's used for the affordable housing overlay or something else that may come up in the future. So, you know, PCs get a bad rap, and, you know, for a good reason. But I think in some circumstances, and you could see that when Palito Housing Corp. brought forth the Wiltin Court, you know, so many people said, "I really love this project, but it violates every single code we have, so help us figure out how to do that." So at the margins for special projects, you know, yes, I'm open to being flexible. Whether or not we use PC or some other version is for the, you know, the planning department to figure out the details.
Are there projects beyond affordable housing that you think PCs could be used for? Is there circumstances?
Not to come to mind, but I just don't like to rule things out when, you know, you never know what will happen in the next four years.
Like, say, a private club at a former mortuary site, or something like that?
Yeah, well, it'll be interesting to see. You know, it'll be interesting to see how that goes.
Okay.
Clearly, that, you know, it's zoned as a mortuary, so something will have to change in order for that, you know, land to be utilized in a different method.
Well, and how would you, what is your view of that?
I haven't formed a view of that yet. We're very early in the process. I have not met with the applicant, I've only read your article.
I don't think it's zoned for a mortuary.
It's a PC zone, but it-
But the underlying zone is a residential zone.
I'm not sure.
I'm not sure what it was before they adopted a PC. The PC does kind of, is mortuary-specific right now, so it would have to be, they're requesting another PC.
But I think it's a good example of where there is an opportunity for the council to go in one of two directions. One, to be responsive to the property owner's interests and vision for what they want to do with their property. But on the other hand, it is located in an ideal location for housing. So how do you balance those two when these kinds of issues come before the council?
That's the only answer I can give, Bill. You know, I mean, that's, you know, they're going to have that with another one that's coming forward, that they're talking about adding housing right down on San Antonio. If housing is really our priority, then it's something that we should ask people to include. But, you know, property owners also have rights. It's a really careful balance. I don't know yet what is enough about what is being proposed to say whether or not that would be a real benefit to the community. You know, places to gather, like, look at First Baptist, look at the demand for Coverly. There is a huge demand for people to have places to gather together and share their experiences, and that may be what this is. And, you know, that would be incredibly valuable, as would housing. I don't know, you know, we're going to have to look at it.
I'm just trying to understand how you would make that decision, because it is a decision that you'll have to repeatedly be making as a council member.
But it's not zoned for housing now.
The comprehensive plan calls for that to be housing, whether the underlying zone does or not.
Okay. Well, I'll have to learn more about that.
But more importantly, if there are people, you know, if the highest priority we have is housing, rather than-
That's why I said if.
-community building or whatever else, it would be instructive to know whether that would be your guiding light, or whether there would be some other factors that you-
It really depends on what's brought forward. If what's brought forward does not, you know, enhance the neighborhood, provide benefits really to many people, feel like it would, you know, be an appropriate use of the space, then it's legitimate to say, you know, maybe this isn't the right thing to do here.
But if it did do all those things?
I'm willing to consider it, you know, rather than, yeah, I'm willing to consider it on its merits, but I don't know what those are yet.
One way for increasing housing supply, of course, is to build more densely, and the planning commission this week is looking at whether or not to change our M15s to our M20s. If you take it to kind of a logical conclusion, you're looking at R1 districts becoming maybe R2 districts, and already there's, you know, more relaxed rules for ADUs, accessory dwelling units. I want to get at your thoughts on what is the line for increasing density in different areas of town, specifically the neighborhoods?
Yeah, sure. So, I mean, you know, the R1 neighborhoods, they're a jewel, and those of us who are lucky enough to live in them have a great appreciation for their walkability and, you know, seeing neighbors and the green space. I mean, I feel extraordinarily lucky to live, you know, in a single-family neighborhood. I'm also really glad that we have the opportunity now, anyone, not just people with really large lots, to build an ADU for your personal circumstances, whether it's, you know, providing space for a family member, or whether it's, you know, allowing a space for caregivers as we age, you know, providing space for students. I can't tell you how many emails I get from people who, like, their kids are going to Foothill, or Stanford, or Santa Clara, and they need a place to live, that kind of thing. I'm super excited. I'm very glad that we've done that. And I realize that it's difficult for some people, because it may change, you know, their backyard a little bit. It's trickier, right, in an Eichler, right? And I live in an Eichler, so certainly we should do things at the margins. Beyond the ADUs, I'm not particularly comfortable, you know, adding extra density in the single-family neighborhoods, not just because it changes the character, but because we don't have the transportation infrastructure to get people anywhere, right? Again, I live on Ross Road, and with our bike boulevard, it's really brought into relief that not everyone can ride a bike. So I would prefer, I would really prefer to have a denser housing, and I don't think that differentiates me from just about anybody, you know, closer to transit.
Would you be willing to give up on the 50-foot-high limit under certain circumstances?
Under certain circumstances, yes. The same that others have discussed. Affordable housing, and, you know, and that means, you know, like, 80% or below on BMR, and very near transit, so maybe something like a quarter mile. I'm willing to be, I'm willing to consider with an open mind those, in those circumstances. But I want to say, the 50-foot-high limit has actually served us very well, and I'm grateful to the people, you know, who thought ahead and put it in place. The reality is, you know, homes, you know, at that time might have cost $200,000, whereas today, they're 20 times that. So I think it's reasonable at the margins, you know, from an affordability standpoint, you know, to consider relaxing them.
So just to be clear, you said 80%, and I'm not sure what you were referencing, whether that was 80% of median income, or whether you're saying that you would be willing-
No, 80%, yeah, 80% of median income.
Right. So you wouldn't limit that dense a development to BMR units, to subsidize housing units? You would open it up to market-rate housing, but somehow try to have that aimed at the 80%?
No, I don't think I've been clear. And so like, so I'm talking about affordable housing the way Palito Housing Corporation does it, right? They use their credits and they set the limit, so anything-
So subsidize housing, what you're talking about?
Yes, yes, sorry, just to be clear.
Okay. So are there any circumstances where you would support going above the 50-foot-high limit for market-rate housing?
I don't think so. Not that I know of now, but if someone came forward with an unbelievable proposal that had a really significant number of BMR units, I'm willing to look at it. I'm not saying yes or no now.
You mentioned a few minutes ago accessory dwelling units as like a positive step on the housing front. When the council discussed it and adopted a new ordinance, there was sharp dissent from four colleagues that who felt that the city is actually going too far, way beyond the new state regulations in removing parking restrictions, kind of removing like minimum lot requirements, although that was kind of consensus, but yeah, extra square footage, things like that. Do you think the council struck the right balance? Like, I'm curious which side you would have voted for, the five or the four on that one?
Yeah, I think I was out of town that week, and I didn't read it as carefully as I should have, so let me give a general statement, because I don't have enough specific answer to that exact question. I, you know, based on my experience and what I know of people who are building ADUs and where they are, we're really talking about a limited number. Right now, it's in the 20s in terms of permits and applications. In these neighborhoods, I'm not aware of significant parking problems that would mean that, you know, relaxing the parking restriction wasn't okay. So the five was to say, "We're fine with being more permissive."
Yes.
Yes, I would have been on the side of the five.
Okay.
Because I want to encourage that. I want to encourage that kind of construction. It's a small footprint, it's not visible from the street, and fundamentally, it gives families flexibility. That's what I'm excited about.
I wanted to ask you about Airbnbs. So it's been raised a couple times at the council, which decided, it seems, not to take action on that. There's some concerns about the- There's some concerns about the city allowing illegal Airbnbs for fewer than 30 days, not collecting taxes properly, that Airbnbs are impacting the quality of life in various neighborhoods. So I want to, oh, and, and that they could be taking away permanent housing opportunities. So I wanted to get your thoughts on whether or not this is something that the council should take up.
I think we should definitely take another look at it. You know, we are collecting the TOT on them. It's not clear to me that it's being applied to everyone, or if we're getting, you know, really as much as we should. There are also other, right, things that aren't Airbnb, aren't Airbnb, and I don't know that we're collecting from them. I just don't have that information. I think we, you know, it's time to take a look and see, we've had a couple of years, see how this goes. Neighbors next to us, they're, they're, uh, they were designing their house and it was taking a little longer, so their long-term renter had left, but they were still waiting to get the permits from the city. They did Airbnb, it worked out just fine. I know other people who've had, you know, different experiences. So yeah, it's worth taking a look at that and figuring out, are we, are we capturing, you know, the income that we should be, and are people behaving in the neighborhoods the way they should be? You know, the duration, absolutely, we should take a look at. It's a little tricky to monitor. Um, we, we need help from the company in order to do that, but, you know, I think we can tighten that program up a little bit.
Why is it that Palo Alto has not worked with Airbnb the way other cities have to have them collect the tax?
I don't know.
As simple as can be.
I don't know. I don't know. I mean, we certainly get some. We get like about a million dollars a year. That was what Lalo said the last time he talked about it. You were probably there.
It's been a while.
Yeah.
The latest assessment that I had-
Through voluntary payments, or not voluntary, compliance by individuals.
Like, the latest assessment that I had was from the hotel people who basically said that the city can get about five million and it collects only about one million. But that's, I have to verify. That's-
Yeah, no, I think, yeah, we should, we should work with-
I'm interested in hearing you say more about Johnson's other point, which is that as, as property values increase and the ability for people to move out of their homes and use them as Airbnb rentals, you basically are removing housing stock from the community. And to me, that seems like a way bigger, more problematic issue and a contributor to the price of housing here. If we're, if we have a system that is allowing a reduction in rental housing because of the transient housing, what's your view on, on that, the scope of that problem and what should be done about it?
So, let me just test for understanding. So your belief is that more people, instead of renting for six months or a year or two years if they move away, are just Airbnb-ing their home for extended periods of time. I don't know how many there are like that, so, but let's, let's just for, you know, sake of argument, say that there are enough, that that should be a concern. Um, we have to enforce that, right? We have rules about how, how many days, I'm pretty sure we don't-
No, I'm not referring to the length of, of the rental. I'm just saying that because you can charge so much-
Yeah.
-with a Palo Alto home for a legitimate Airbnb-
Right.
-that's less than 30 days, you, those, those homes are taken, are basically out of the rental market.
Yeah. Well, I guess what I'd wanna know is, is it people who are living somewhere else and just doing this for financial reasons? Or is it people, many of whom I know, who are like grandparents, and they're here for two weeks, and then they spend two weeks with their grandkids in Oregon, and then they're here for two weeks and they're back and forth? I don't have any issue in that circumstance. That, that seems fine. You know, they're residents of the community, they're just not here full-time. Um, I just don't have enough data to know how prevalent it, it is, the problem that you're describing. I mean, if it is prevalent, then, you know, it's a little hard to know what, what the levers would be to, uh, to encourage someone to, you know, to rent to someone who wants to be here for a longer time.
Collect the tax for one.
That'd be a good place to start. I hear we have a deficit in infrastructure plan.
With almost half of the dwelling units in Palo Alto being occupied by renters, I'm wondering what you think city policies should be towards protecting and stabilizing rents in Palo Alto? And how you would have voted had you been on the council two weeks ago when-
Two weeks ago or four weeks ago or?
Whatever, pick a date.
Yeah.
When once again the council bickered over how to handle the subject of rent stabilization.
I think bicker is a very polite word for whatever that means. So, as, as I, as I've stated before and will state again, there is a lot of information we don't have yet. For example, what percentage of our rental housing stock is actually single-family homes, right? People who are long-term renters, they're here for a while, or, you know, that kind of thing. It'd be interesting to know, know that. I definitely don't know enough about, and I don't know that anybody does, has enough data about how many evictions there have been in the past couple of years to understand how significant a problem it is. To specifically answer your question, I was concerned about people on council making, adding things that were not in the staff recommendation around income testing and also around changing the size of, and this was for the emergency ordinance, what, what size apartment units that would affect. That, that, that is an example of not, not having database decisions. That is, we need to get data before we're, we're deciding things on the dais like that. So certainly I would have voted for the emergency ordinance, not because I think it solves the problem of the people who are being evicted, but because it sends a message that it will be difficult, you know, for that many people to find a space to live, and they might need a little extra time to do it. Beyond that, I, I start to have more serious concerns. And rent stabilization is really, as the city attorney said, you know, rent control. And I don't think rent control is gonna solve our housing problem, because it doesn't create a single new place for anyone to live.
Would you, would you have supported studying rent control further? Or would you have voted with those who thinks we shouldn't study it further based on what you just said about rent control?
I am, I am happy to have more studies, but what was missing is that-
So point five, point five in the motion, you would have supported?
There was, there was, there was, let's go, let's send it to Policy and Services for discussion, and then there was council member Tanaka's addition, let's do an economic study. What was missing in there is where is the data? Before we start to solve a problem or attempt to help, let's at least understand the magnitude of it. And I, I don't, I don't, I didn't see any data and I haven't heard from others that that exists yet. So I would like to see that first.
Did you need data to refer something to a committee? Is that what you're suggesting?
They just, it was referred for discussions, and I would have preferred to have it, it referred to yet, you know, an actual assessment of the current state of the rental market. So, for example, not using the median rent right now, which includes single-family homes, but having segments. So how much is it to, what is the median paid right now? Not, not, um, if you were to rent for new on, um, single-family homes? What is it for apartment units that are 50 and over? What is the 10 to 12? I don't, I don't know exactly where you would cut it. Um, but, you know, you could see that evening or one of those evenings we were there, you know, people coming down to two units and five units. I don't know where to draw the line until I have a better sense of, you know, how much stock we have in each of these places. It's possible some of these things they were suggesting aren't even going to help, because they won't address enough of the problem. I, I just, I personally feel that we need a little bit more information before we make any of these big decisions.
So in that 4-4 vote, you would have voted with those removing item five or keeping item five? Given those were the two options out there? Item five being exploring rent stabilization?
Remove item five, for, again, not, not just for a process reason and then also, you know, just from a policy standpoint.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm confused now. So you would have voted to not include in the referral to the Policy and Services Committee any discussion of rent stabilization? You wanted, you wanna take that off the table of consideration?
I was happy with, with council member Tanaka's saying, let's do an economic analysis before we discuss it. Right? Let's separate renter protections, right, lease restrictions from rent control. Can we do that for a minute? Yeah? Because they are different.
Yeah, you can, you can do whatever you want right now.
So, so, okay, so, so on rent control, I would have supported council member Tanaka's request that we actually study the economic impact of that over the long term, okay? That's what I would want on the rent control side. On the rent, renter protections, lease restrictions, I would want more information on how many people have been evicted, you know, what, where exactly are, are people renting, in how big a unit, that kind of thing.
So you would not want the Policy and Services Committee members to have any discussion about rent stabilization until some economic study had been completed?
Until we have more information, yes, I would have been comfortable with that.
Okay.
So Stanford's come under scrutiny for housing as well with its general use permit and the county's two housing alternatives. Given that the analysis of those housing alternatives estimates that there's gonna be increased traffic and other issues, what are your thoughts on what needs to, what the city needs to do in order to push the housing but also manage transportation with Stanford?
Well, that was a bit of a conundrum, wasn't it? I think people thought, yay, we'll just put the housing on Stanford and that will reduce traffic. But any of us who have families know that in the event more than one person comes, the commuter may be on Stanford land, but the rest of the people in the family need to go to school and the pharmacy and, you know, synagogue and soccer practice. So that, that made sense once it happened. We're like, wow, seemed like a good idea. I think, I think we have a couple of options there. And hopefully, you know, Stanford will be, you know, interested and willing in participating. Uh, former mayor Pat Bird talks a little bit about, you know, employee shuttles potentially for Stanford and maybe some of our other large employers in the way that Google and Facebook and large ones do. I think some of this actually would get to the robust shuttle system program I was talking about earlier. It's really hard for me to figure out how to get people out of their cars when not everyone is gonna be on a bike and not everyone lives in a walkable neighborhood. So until and unless we have something more than, you know, one shuttle going not all the way up and down Middlefield, I don't know that we're gonna be able to really mitigate traffic. So I'd, I'd be interested in having a really robust shuttle system.
So you would be in favor of more housing on Stanford campus in tandem with a robust shuttle system?
Yes. Because otherwise I don't, you know, otherwise all those people are gonna be driving, you know, on Embarcadero, you know, down Page Mill, our, our most congested areas. Look at, you know, 101. Yes, I would.
I want to ask about city hall staffing, unless you guys-
We did just kind of pivot to traffic. I was, I was gonna ask a quick question. Well, first of all, you, you know the Ross Road project probably better than the other candidates?
How much time do we have?
Uh, I was curious just to get your thoughts as to whether you support it. And I have one more question, kind of unrelated, but somewhat related to traffic. I just wanna clarify, earlier on, you mentioned that when talking about infrastructure, that the downtown garage is one of the things that some candidates are talking about, maybe going back on along with some bike projects. I'm curious whether you actually oppose the downtown garage, whether you have a position on that?
I don't, so I'll answer downtown garage first and then Ross Road.
Too unrelated, yeah, that should be a quicker.
Yeah, second one first. With the downtown parking garage, I, I think we're still waiting for the parking study. And now I'm concerned that we're not gonna have it. So I, I, I know we had the two parking garages in the original infrastructure plan. The one here, obviously in the California Ave area is happening as it needs to in order to be able to provide enough space for the police station. Um, I'm not prepared to oppose or support the downtown parking garage. I am prepared to have a discussion about it once we understand what the current parking situation is in downtown, right? It's changed in the past four years, the prevalence of Uber drop-offs, right, and circling, and Lyft, et cetera. So, um, I, I'm, I'm willing to take another look at it, but I, I want some more, a better understanding of how the RPP is working, all of that, and the TDMs before, before I make a decision on that.
Fair enough, Ross Road.
All right, Ross Road. I, I am a positive person by nature, and I really wanted to, um, to be supportive of the project. And when I first came forward to speak about it at city council after construction began, I, I focused on communications, because I, that was clearly an area where, um, you know, there, it had been insufficient, which I think is a kind term. Over time, I have come to realize that I think it's, it's a, it's a bigger problem. And, and it's actually been useful for me as a candidate, as I walk my dog and talk with my neighbors, because I've had to figure out, well, what would I do if I was on council to prevent myself from voting for this without fully understanding it? The ramifications or what it might look like. And so I, I have three questions that I'll ask if I, if I am elected and have the opportunity to serve. The first is, what is the objective and how will it be measured? And I actually think that's where this project failed, because it has multiple objectives, depending on who you ask. It's about slowing traffic to the Y. It's about doubling adult commuter cyclists. It's about safe routes to school. All of those are slightly different and would, and would come up with slightly different answers. Um, and there wasn't really a way to measure it except reduced speed on Ross. Well, I think we don't, I'm, I'm not even waiting for the data. If you build 15 concrete obstructions in a two-mile, you know, a one and a half mile radius, you're gonna slow traffic. You should check with the people on Lewis Road, because there's definitely more over there.
So when you see a bigger problem, you're talking about the design of the project itself as opposed to communication?
Yes. Yes. And then the second question is, could we accomplish this in a more cost-effective way? And I think the answer there was yes. I mean, speed bumps, a stop sign in front of my house, would have been fine with that. You know, that absolutely would have been fine. And then the third point is, you know, does the community know what we're doing and why? Not do they understand, not do they agree, but do they understand? And that, um, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm really sad, frankly, that it's, that it hasn't gone as well as I know staff and so many bicycle advocates had hoped. But, you know, when you look at the number of people who came and spoke at that event, who love cycling on Bryant and really don't like cycling on Ross, then I think the city's done the appropriate thing in saying, okay, we need to stop and, and revisit it. You know, and, and then the last thing to say is, um, it's very important that people understand what it looks like. So, so if you look at the PDF, which is 629 pages long, I did eventually go back and look at it, there's like a little arrow in front of my house. That's all it is, it's black. But when it's built, it's a little bit more than that. So, you know, I don't entirely fault council for not understanding, you know, all the details. And how can they? You know, that's one of many things. But, but I, I would like to see, you know, a, a better description of things so that people can make, make better decisions.
City hall staffing?
Yeah. So there's several key department head positions that are open right now. Planning Director, Chief Transportation Official, Development Center Director, Utilities Director, to be. Um, and then Public Works until just recently. What's your assessment of-
And budget, right?
And budget.
Enforcement lead, yeah, we can go.
You can keep going, go enforcement. Uh, what's your assessment of why there's this turnover? Are you concerned that it's significant?
I am concerned. I'm concerned because, you know, it's hard to operate a complicated city without people leading these, um, these departments. Uh, half of those are, were expected retirements, right? So, you know, um, Lalo and Mike, um, those were expected. And, um, you know, there are relatively strong, and, you know, certainly Brad has just been appointed and Kylie's doing a wonderful job. So, you know, there with, you know, with, with time to plan, um, I think the city staff has done a nice job of having the right people in place and then don't seem to be, you know, major hiccups. Certainly a concern on, on the planning and specifically on the transportation side, right? You know, we'd only recently split that department, which I think is appropriate in a lot of respects. If you look at how much the transportation plant project team is managing, not just the new projects, but also thinking about the train crossings, let alone everything else going on each day. So that one's definitely a concern, and, you know, underneath that, even, you know, the department is really understaffed at the moment. You know, we all bear some responsibility for that. Council wasn't particularly supportive of staff after Ross Road, for example. Um, and I'm sure staff took that really hard and, and, and I'm sorry about that, because they worked so hard for so long. But somewhere someone, you know, just didn't give them enough information or connection with the community to, you know, to figure out if, if that could be done well. And then, let's see, planning. Yes, that one's been open for quite some time. Yeah, it definitely is a concern. And I think it certainly explains why the council, you know, decided to appoint Ed Chikada, because it would have been, you know, even more difficult to fill some of those positions if we had the city manager's office also, you know, up in the air.
Some would say that the, uh, community members are too demanding of city staff or that council overloads city staff.
I, I think both are true, and, and that's part of why I'm, you know, I'm sad to be part of the people, you know, part of the group saying like, I don't, I don't think that the Ross Road thing went well. It doesn't, I, I wasn't happy. It took me a long time to, to step forward and say, yeah, I, I actually don't think this was a good project. And it certainly wasn't implemented, you know, in a way that would make it successful. Uh, one of, one of the coaching points I tried to give them, and I said, and of course it was too late, I said, you know, you know, if you'd come forward and said, we are gonna do something really bold and we want you to be part of an experiment, and here's what it's gonna look like, and we understand this is a big change. You know, people like me and many of my neighbors would have been like, hmm, we might have been more interested and we might have been willing to take, take part in it. But to surprise people with big changes is, you know, it's usually not very effective. And, and councils, certainly, I mean, the number of times, each night, actually, I should probably tally it. I haven't done it. That would be interesting. The number of times people ask staff to do more, it's just stunning. It's stunning. The number of times people ask staff to do more, it's just stunning. It's stunning. And I don't, it doesn't seem sustainable. So I'm a big fan of prioritizing. That's how I tend to get things done. I think, I think we could do a better job there, both the community and the council. I mean, this should be a wonderful place to work. It really should be.
On that note, I think we're out of time and I want to thank you for coming and wish you best of luck.
Thank you for having me.